All right, being seven o'clock, we will call a meeting with the common council to order. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And clerk, roll call has been taken?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Barrington, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, looking for approval of the February 8th, 2020 minutes.
Make that motion.
Mr. Beesaw makes the motion. Mr. Barrington, seconds the motion. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving along to authorization to pay the bills in the amount of $760,918.54. Mr. Dorsey?
Paying the bills in the amount of $760,918.54.
Made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any additions or corrections to those? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine zero. Moving along to public comment. It looks like we have two school board candidates here. If one of you would like to come forward, please.
Hello, thanks for having me. My name is Mandy Wills. I'm a mom of three kids. I'm running for school board. One of the two seats that are open right now. So I just wanted to come introduce myself, say hi to everybody, so you kind of have a face to the name. We got a couple of things coming up this week, Thursday. One o'clock this school district is having a policy meeting. I advise everybody to attend if they can, public, moms, dads, aunts, uncles, everybody. There's some, there's a particularly hot topic on the agenda to discuss, and it's transgender students and some of the policies that are going to be playing out into our schools. The other thing we have is Thursday night, 6:30 PM, we have a candidate forum where all four candidates have been invited to participate. It's at Familiar Grounds at 6:30. It's kind of, it's not only a meet and greet for everybody, but it's also ask any questions you may have for any of us, and it's an open forum. So it's a great way to get, get in contact and get to know all of the candidates that are running. So that's all I got. Thank you so much. I hope everybody is able to attend the 1 PM policy review meeting with the school.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Hallie Schweitzer. I am running for New London School Board. The reason that I am running is with COVID brought a lot of challenges for a lot of people, our school district, our kids, our parents, and a lot of frustration set in for me as a parent when I was reaching out towards school board and not getting a response. As someone that votes, I expect from people to respond back to me. You don't have to agree with me, but I ask for a response, an acknowledgement. That raised other concerns. If you are not reading my emails on those concerns or getting back to me, are you going to respond on either of more hot topics than what I was contacting you on? I beg for transparency. I want to know what's going on. As a parent, I have five children and three in our elementary school. They are my everything, and I will fight for them, and I will fight for every other student in our district. Parents have a right to know what's going on, and I want that transparency. I would like to also see improvements to our technical education department. Mandy and I have been very boisterous about that. We want to be on the forefront, we want to keep moving forward, we want to see auto tech back in house. The other thing is, I have this school forest. That's a topic that just kind of got stuck underneath my belt, and I'd like to see that situation addressed. So I just want everyone to know that I'm a voice for parents, and I'm not going to go away. Even if, even if I don't get elected on, I will be that voice. That's where I stand.
Thank you, Hallie.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. Move on to standing and special committees, and we'll start off with the Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works, Monday, February 8th, 2022. We will call order at 5:15. We seconded to approve the agendas presented, motion carried by all. Public comment, relevant items on the agenda non-present. Waste water treatment plant update. Are there no questions on the reports? Going pretty well over there. The next was the second citizen participation hearing for CDVG grant for road resurfacing projects. Public hearing was called at 5:23. Brad Warner and Lori Getz from McMahon Associates led a citizen public participation hearing regarding the CDVG grant for the road resurfacing project for Avon, Lima, and Lyons. Items discussed included introduction, purpose of the hearing, updates on the project, resurfacing of Avon, Lima, and Lyons, activities completed up to date, activities remaining, and of discussed housing needs identified in the community, citizen input questions regarding the CDVG project activities. This CDVG hearing gives citizens and committee members the opportunity to provide input and discuss the project and housing needs in New London. No motions were made. This motion was made in second to close the public hearing at 5:40. Director's report included in the agenda package, service anniversary report, Mark Wallace, equipment operator, has completed 23 years of service, ends in February 1st. Future agenda items, review of municipal code 9.49, all train, utility vehicles will be discussed at our next meeting. That is all I have today.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Continue on with the finance and personnel, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Personnel Committee met Wednesday, March 2nd at 5:15. Members present, Dorsey, Bissell, Barington, Roberts, also President, Mayor Harper, Alderman Trenzoff, Alderman Jaffa, Alderman Steen, Groth, Bissell, City Administrator Chad Hart, and the Finance Director, New York. Meeting was called at order at 5:15. Motion made by Barrington, seconded by Roberts, approved the agenda. Clerk was called upon to lead a discussion on contract with Wolf River Lawyers. Orders explained that attorney position will move from elected position to a contractual position as of May 1st, 2022, or ordinance 1380. Wolf River Lawyers was the only bid in the process, and also serves other communities in the area. Contract is a one-year commitment with a plan cost of $40,000. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Bissell, directing the council approval of contract with Wolf River Lawyers. Next, the committee had a discussion on changing the council meeting from the second Tuesday to the third Tuesday of each month. Reason for the change is that the attorney that would be present through would represent the city who long to have council meetings, Wolf River Lawyers serves other communities, currently attends a council meeting on the second Tuesday of each month. City Administrator Warner explained, her stated that staff felt the change to the third Tuesday would also be beneficial, allowing more time for committee meeting minutes and the bill list to be completed. Mr. Bissell added, it would also allow time for other committee meeting if needed. Roberts, Roberts Bissell, recommended also a change in a day of council meetings from the second Tuesday of each month to the third Tuesday of each month, to avoid the current conflict. Allowing attorney, Steph Waller, to be present at those meetings, this change would begin in May, carrying nine zero. Finance Director, Mucklery Corp., was presented. Motion was made by Bissell and seconded by Barrington to recommend a council. An updated resolution assigning fund balance for the year ending April 31, 2021, including a change in the assigned fund balance number under capital projects from $777,39 to $864,206, carrying nine zero. Financial Director, Director's Report was discussed. Therefore, in all public power, for the business, motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Roberts to adjourn at 6:05. The next regular scheduled finance committee meeting will open in council chambers on April 6th. The time possibly moving to 4:30, we will accommodate a second meeting. Therefore, if you are interested in attending a finance meeting in April, please feel free to call City Hall or keep your eyes on social media outlets, develop a check to start time. I would like to move to approve the license list as presented in your packet.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dorsey, who's second. Mr. Bissell, for approval of license list, please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine zero.
Consider adopting ordinance amending 2.01 of the municipal code relating to the schedule of the regular council meetings, first reading.
Second.
Made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Bissell, to consider adopting ordinance amending 2.01 of the municipal code relating to the schedule of the regular council meetings, first reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
The resolution assigning fund balance for the year ending April 31, 2021, including a change in the assigned fund balance number for capital projects from $777,39 to $864,206.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Herter. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Mr. Bissaw? Motion carried, nine zero.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Move on to Park and Recreation, Mr. Bissaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. Park and Rec. Committee met on Tuesday, March 1st. Committee members present, Bissaw, Bissell, Groth, Richie, Groth, Rachel Schuler, April, Hammerdorff, Kelly Baker, Byzum. Council members present were Mark, Mark Herter, John Hass, Mike Barrington, Dave Dorsey, Tim Roberts, and Dennis Herter. Others present were Chad Hart, City Administrator, Ginger Arnt, Director of Park and Rec., Michelle Lambert, Public Service Administrative Assistant, Jane Murphy, PD, Public Service Administrative Assistant, Jim Jaeger, Jim and Sandy Massnet, Veterans Memorial Foundation. Meeting was called at order at 5:15. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Bissell, to move to the fifth agenda. Motion is carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. The Newton Blackmore Trail update, Administrator Hart giving status update on the Newton Blackmore Trail project. Chad explained that phase one of the project design was originally proposed to span from the House Road to Quiper Park. New development has occurred in the design of the bridge to go over the Ambrose River safely due to height and clearance challenges, as well as a hundred-year tire level. In order to meet the time deadline of the grant, Chad proposed that the trail be developed in segments, with the first segment being from House Road to the London Dog Park, with a completion timeframe on October 31st, 2022. Future planning for the second segment would be researched after completion, with a possibility to apply for another grant to continue the project. No motion was made at this time. Wapaka County contract for the use of the Washington Senior Center. Wapaka County has backed the congregate meal site at the Washington Center for two years. The county has had an annual contract with the city since 2002 to utilize the facility for the senior meal program. The city provides maintenance, cleaning supplies, and office space. Arnt requested approval to renew the 2022 contract agreement with Wapaka County Department of Health and Human Services for the use of the Washington Senior Center. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Richie, move that the council renew the 2022 contract agreement with Wapaka County Department of Health and Human Services for the use of the Washington Senior Center. That proposal will be brought to council. Veteran memorial at Taft Park updates in consideration of lighting request. Jim Jaeger gave an overview of the updates planned for the existing funds the Memorial Foundation has left for Taft Park. Jaeger explained that in the summer of 2022, the Veterans Memorial Foundation will be building and placing a picnic table shelter at Taft Park. Once the work is complete and their funds are depleted, the foundation will then handle the memorial in the city of New London. Mr. Jaeger did request that the foundation still have an opportunity to be involved in any future planning of the park and the updated annually on memorial. In closing, Jaeger requests that the city install timed lighting on the murals to illuminate them for the time period in the evening. Parks and Rec. Director Ginger Arnt will be meeting with the PHM lighting researching options for installing lighting on the murals, and will bring forward to a future meeting. No motion was made at this time. Accept a donation and allow naming rights for the Festival Foods fireworks. Ginger Arnt was approached by Skogen Festival Foods Community Involvement Specialist requiring, inquiring about the city's annual fireworks display. Festival Foods would like to sponsor the annual fireworks display in lieu of naming rights for the event. They will be donating the entire expense of the display in the amount of $15,000. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Bissell, move that council accept a donation and allow naming rights for the annual fireworks display at Festival Foods fireworks. Motion is carried by all, that will be brought to council. Director's memo, Director's memo was included in the agenda package and reviewed by the committee. Chairman's report, non-presented. Committee members' report is non-presented. Future agenda items, Veterans Memorial lighting at Taft Park, revisit Hatton Park wall. Ending agenda, next Park and Rec. Committee meeting to be held April 6th, 2022 at 4:30, prior to the finance and personnel meeting. Any other to discuss? Motion made by Bissell, seconded by Richie, move to adjourn at 5:56. I would look for approval for Wapaka County contract for use of the Washington Senior Center.
Second.
By Mr. Bissaw, seconded by Mr. Hass, to consider Wapaka County meal site contract. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine zero.
And I would also look to accept a donation and allow naming rights for the Festival Foods fireworks.
Motion's been made by Mr. Bissaw, who's second. Mr. Groth, to consider accepting a donation and allowing naming rights for the annual fireworks display as Festival Foods fireworks. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine zero. Is that all you have, Mr.?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bissaw, you might as well drive us right in and a planning commission as well. Thank you.
Planning Commission, head on Monday, February 7th, 2022. Those in attendance were Chairman Bissaw, Donna Gabbert, Mayor Mark Herter, Susie Steingraber, Jamie Walbrook, Jason Besett. Others in attendance were City Administrator Chad Hart, John Mathi, and Alderman John Hass. Meeting was called order by Chairman Bissaw at 5:15. The motion was made to adopt the agenda by Besett, seconded by Steingraber, carried by all. A CSM was presented to split the parcels 33, 12, 24, 10 at 1001 North Street. The purpose for splitting the parcels is so the owner can sell off the southern half of the existing building for a neighboring business to move into. Zoning Administrator Vincent confirmed that the split complies with current zoning requirements. An ingress-to-egress easement will be included on the southern parcel to access the newly-formed northern parcel. Motion was made by Gabbert, seconded by Steingraber, to approve the CSM as presented. Motion is carried by all. Motion made to adjourn by Gabbert, seconded by Steingraber, carried by all. Meeting adjourned at 5:20. Planning Commission also met on Thursday, February 24th, 2022. Those in attendance were Chairman Bissaw, Jason Besett, Donna Gabbert, Mayor Mark Herter, Susie Steingraber, Jamie Walbrook, and Brandy Boss, Byzum. Others in attendance, City Administrator Chad Hart, Building Inspector, Zoning Administrator David Vincent, Tim Roberts, Dave Dorsey, John Hass, Kara Fowler, Cedar Firth, and Lee Shaw. Meeting was called to order by Chairman Bissaw at 5:15. The motion was made by Gabbert to adopt the agenda and seconded by Steingraber, is carried by all. The January 27th minutes and the February 7th, 22 special meeting minutes for review. A motion to accept both sets of minutes was made by Besett and seconded by Walbrook, carried by all. Public hearing regarding input from the Comprehensive Plan Chapter 8 adoption was open to the public for discussion and comment. The audience was cleared to engage in dialogue, but after no questions or dialogue, was presented the public hearing portion, and the agenda was closed. There was a lot of discussion on the International Property Maintenance Code. It was agreed that the zoning administrator would compare the proposed maintenance code with our existing nuisance code, chapter number 10, and the housing code, chapter 15, to see which areas we may need to address or eliminate as it relates to code enforcement. A review of future agenda items was discussed. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 24th, at 10:15. The motion was made by, to adjourn by Gabbert, seconded by Steingraber, carried by all. Meeting was adjourned at 6:03. Glad to have you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Bissaw. Economic Development Committee, Mr. Dorsey.
There is no meeting for February. Next scheduled meeting is March 29th, 2022. I just present the WC DC February orders in the back. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Move on to minutes and reports distributed, and we'll stand as read in your packets. Continuing on down, reports of officers and recent events and announcements to the public, starting off with the mayor's announcements. I'll make my appointment in the Wolf River Lawyers SC as city attorney effective May 1st, 2022, and the consideration of execution of a retainer and engagement agreement with Wolf River Lawyers. This needs to be affirmed by council with a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. Richie. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, nine zero. The only other thing I'd like to say is, is Happy St. Patrick's Day, and please make safe choices this week as you venture out to engage in all the activities that are coming, so please, please make safe choices. Moving on to Utility Manager, Mr. Besett. He is not here today. Then we'll follow that up with the Chief of Police, Mr. Scheer.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had a couple of anniversaries. Mike Harlow, 16 years, Jenna Creewell, two years, and Jay Schrader, 11 years. And then just talking about St. Patrick's Day, I just want to remind everyone to make sure to leave your pets at home, and also that there is no open intoxicants allowed in our streets, so if you have intoxicants, make sure to keep them in the bars or in the beer tent on that day. So have a good, safe St. Patrick's Day, and we'll have some nice weather for that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I skipped Mr. Herr, City Administrator.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I do these reports, so I want to make sure I have the opportunity.
Sorry about that.
In the upcoming months, the city will continue the process to update the city's comprehensive plan. Many of the plan aspects are being reviewed by the planning commission at their meetings. In the last year, many of you know, we looked at chapter eight, which takes a lot of time in reviewing the existing and the future land use maps, but in the next year, we'll be looking at the rest of the existing plans for updates. There'll be a point in the future that we'll be asking and gaining public input on the plan, so if that's something you're interested in, keep an eye on the planning commission agendas for that progress. The state of Wisconsin is still offering the $10,000 Main Street bounce back grant, which is encouraged to, is intended to encourage businesses to move into vacant commercial buildings. However, the grant has become extremely popular, that there are some new restrictions on what size of buildings are now eligible. So if anybody has any questions on these new updates, feel free to contact me, and I'll have, I'll give you the information that I have for your assistance. And in the last few weeks, you may have noticed, we've kicked out our new Hasan Address branding campaign, which has started and will continue to highlight why New London is the address for many great quality of life aspects why people are drawn to. So keep an eye on our social media outlets for those branding messages, and help us out by liking, sharing, and commenting on those polls. Those go a long way to recirculate and push it on other people why New London is a great community center. Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. And continuing on to Director of Public, or Director of Park and Recreation, Ms. Arnt.
Thank you. The Senior Center will be having a scamming presentation by the Better Business Bureau on March 22nd at 11:30 AM. This is a great informational session educating seniors about phone calls, emails, things like that that they may get that may seem very important, however, they're actually a scam that want to either steal your identity or your money. So we'll be educating the seniors on that on March 22nd. In the Recreation Division, we are still accepting registration for a Home Alone Babysitting Class on March 16th, as well as a Kid Stage, excuse me, Kid Stage Production of The Wizard of Oz. That program will start April 11th. The spring swimming lesson registration is now open. This is the last session before summer, so if you'd like to get those lessons in before you head off for summer break, get registered now by calling the Aquatic and Fitness Center. And then the Park, Streets, and Recreation Department all have positions open for summer work. Applications are online at the city's website for laborers, camp counselors, camp supervisor, lifeguards, and umpires. Several positions available that we're looking to fill, so you can register for those, or apply for those online. And then last but not least, the Recreation Department will be holding their first Easter egg hunt, so make sure that you mark your calendars for the Great Egg Hunt on April 11th. We'll have more marketing out for that, so keep an eye on our city's website and in social media for details on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Arnt. Move on to Fire Chief, Mr. Wilford.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, I have some service anniversaries. Mark Wilford, 38 years. Mark Hunskey, 38 years. Nicholas Woodman, 10 years. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. They've all done for their service as well. City Clerk.
The election results from the city of New London, specific results from the primary are included in the council packet. Reminder that the spring election is coming up on April 5th. Early voting will be an option for you, for residents between March 22nd and April 1st. Those absentee ballots will be sent to residents that have a request unfiled by April, or I'm sorry, by March 15th. Please note that due to a recent court decision regarding drop boxes in the Teagan versus Wisconsin Election Commission's case, absentee ballots can no longer be returned in our drop box outside at the north entrance of the municipal building. Those absentee ballots that are going to be mailed to residents have to be returned either by hand to the clerk or in the US mail. So I know residents have become accustomed to dropping those in our after-hours drop box, and they will no longer be able to do that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk. Any other comments?
I have a comment. I'd just like to thank Chad and the rest of the people up in the front office that stayed on point after FEMA from our 2019 storm damage that we had, that they stayed on and we got the funds to pay for it, you know? That was not a small amount. Just want to give a big thank you to those people.
Absolutely. That was a huge task, and they had to put in a lot of extra time. Absolutely, that was a huge task and, and they had to put in a lot of extra time and energy to, to continue that process. Top of it. Any other comments? All right, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Mr. Barrington, who have second? Robert seconds the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.